I'm muted.
All right, let's go ahead and call the S K to plan a commission meeting to order Thursday, October 20th, 2022. Can we get a roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Hartwig.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Hi.
Commissioner Ennis. Commissioner Sager.
Here.
Commissioner Hawks.
Here.
Commissioner Riddle.
Here.
Chairman Wheeler.
Here. Excellent. Looks like we have Paul Strobel from the city council sitting in too. Thanks, Paul for being out there.
Sure thing. I'm here.
Um, we have two items on the agenda. We have a subdivision application 2022 dash zero one dash S. Greenworks contractors, and then we have a city infrastructure update from city manager Melanie Wagner. Um, if it's okay with everybody, could we swap those and get the infrastructure update first? Is there any issue?
I thought the same thing.
Do you see that applicants in the attendees? I guess I could see. Um. I was gonna, do you mind if we ask if the applicants are all right with that?
Sure.
For their time? Because I know that the, I think the infrastructure update is intended to be pretty brief. Um, Anne Marie and Buck, could one of you raise your hand or unmute? And let us know if that's okay with you if we do the infrastructure update first.
Anne Marie, you have a hand up. But.
Hi, Taylor. This is Anne Marie. That's no problem.
Okay, thanks.
All right, then. Let's go ahead and have a city manager, Melanie Wagner, come on up. Well, I figure it's kind of an integral part of hearing the update and then subdivisions. You know how it works. Do we officially, do we need to make a motion and do this? Or is this okay that we just flip them?
Pretty sure we can just.
Okay. I didn't want to get in trouble with the law.
Don't do that. It's not fun.
Okay. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for letting me come and share. I know I've been talking about trying to keep you guys more up to speed on what is going on because there is a lot going on right now. And I feel like we talk about it all the time. And so it's common knowledge, but it's not. I mean, outside this building, it just looks like the building's just sitting here. What's going on? What are we doing anything? So I'm going to just walk through. We go next slide, please. Here's a little matrix. Is that like shared on the Zoom too? Okay, perfect. Um, so here's a little matrix of the projects that will, I'll just walk through really quickly. The ones I really wanted to focus on was the wastewater treatment plant because that's our massive project. But we have water wastewater and transportation projects going on. Next slide, please. So first of all, at the water treatment plant, the our UV disinfection, which is a different way of, or an additional way of treating, because we have to have a certain amount of contact time with the chlorine contact time to disinfect and UV helps with that. And I'm not sure if it's, it's a combination of it lets us get the water through faster and use less chemical. But I'm not, I, for those details, if you want, if you have questions, raise your hand. And if I can't answer the technical questions, we will get answers to you. Somebody will help me write them down.
The Zoom attendees are not seeing the screen share.
Uh oh. Anyway, that project. Have extra notes here. That was scheduled to go online this week. And I haven't got an update from Chris to know for sure if that's going back. I mean, it's, it's close. So that's one project we've been doing. Can they see it now? Okay. All right. Thank you. Next slide. Then we have the high service pump station that was only brought to our attention during the fires. Because when the water system was being pulled down really low because the, you know, water's being used to fight the fires. And we realized that when the rez one, it's up in, that's in Casadero Heights gets too low. It can't suck water up to our rez three, which is our high reservoir, our height that serves. At that time, it was like 500 homes that it would serve. It's probably more now. And so it, it made us realize that if we had a problem that we needed redundancy, we needed, if we need to be able to pump it up there no matter what, and we need to have some redundancy with the next high water level reservoir we're going to do. So this, that's actually not a picture of it. But it's a cool picture. They, it's so it's up on the end of Espinoza. And it, we got a grant, it was like a grant. It was the wildfire recovery funds. The mayor reached out to the state to get some funding for that. So that, yes, it is just finishing up. I'm going to leave it at that. Finish it up this month. It's very close to being online. But that will help us to get the water to the high level reservoir. Next slide. And if anybody has any questions along the way, just let me know. Okay, our next high level reservoir. Because right now we only have one. So right now we're in phase one and we're extending the high level water distribution line. It's going from the end of Hillway. It starts kind of down there and it's heading toward the little road with the, what's that road? Nope. The one Lawrence Road, heading towards Lawrence Road. That's phase one and it is under, I'm not sure if they started. They already had the pre-construction, but I'm pretty sure that that started. So they're gonna, we're gonna do that, funding it with the water system SDCs to get the water line out to Lawrence. Phase two is going to run the water line up Lawrence Road and then construct the reservoir, another half a million gallon reservoir up there. So we'll have extra storage and we'll have redundancy for our high level services. So.
And that reservoir is going right at the end of Lawrence, right?
Yes. Yep. And we're in the, we're in an appraisal process right now because we have to go through, we have to follow specific rules. So there was an appraisal and now we've ordered a, an appraisal review just to make sure. And then we'll have to negotiate that with the property owner to get a, it's in the county. So it'll be a permanent easement, I think, is what we'll negotiate. I think it's a permanent easement or a long-term easement. Anyway, so the appraisal is underway. Then they'll start engineering. We're going to get a loan for that. And it should be, we were hoping to have it done by the end of this year, but it's, things are just going so much slower. So by mid-year next year, we should have that up and running.
How long has that project been in the works?
Yeah. Gosh, I don't know when it started. Um, that's a good question. I could find that out. Although I didn't bring a pen. Could somebody write that down? When did the high level, like, when did we get the idea or when? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, what, because it was stemming from an issue in Current Creek, wasn't it? Current Creek Development? That there wasn't adequate water service up there.
Right.
With the recent subdivision applications from Cedar Ridge.
Yes, the high level reservoir, it. I thought it said, yes, it extends the high level water distribution line to serve the current creek development. So that I think was what, and I'm not sure what the timeline was on when that started, but.
Okay.
That is what started it. But it's also, it will help us to have redundancy to service the high level areas.
Okay.
Okay. Next slide. Okay. No picture here, but this is our, it's a screw press system to de-water, sledge de-watering. It's the biosolids and we usually spread those on fields. It's not so acceptable anymore. There's not like a lot of fields that are not close to somebody's house anymore. Um, it's just less, it's become less and less desirable, more and more troublesome. And it's always been troublesome to try to spread it during the wet months. And so this is a piece of equipment. It's being built up in Port Angeles. And we're going to have a pole barn built prior to the arrival of this equipment. And it will take, it will press all the liquid out of that biosolid and make it into, I'm just telling me you what people have told me. Make it into a kind of a cake dried out stuff. And yeah. And, and it will store in the barn, but then we can, sometimes you can ship it over to Eastern Oregon where they can use it on fields, spread it on fields, but it's not in liquid form. Or it can go to the landfill if we have to take it to the landfill. But it will, that, and that piece of equipment that we're spending a lot of money on, we'll be able to move to our new site. So it's not like we're spending all this money and it's just going to get left behind. It will be moved to the new wastewater treatment site and will help with the process. Excellent. Okay, that's a great picture. So there's Dawn out on the mill property. I think he's got like a camera, little scope thing on the end of that fishing pole. You can't hardly see it from back there, but so we did, so I and I, you mentioned I and I would help tremendously if we could get that under control because it's during the winter time. When we get, when the groundwater flows into the sewer pipes, that we get a lot of water going through the sewer plant. That doesn't need to be treated. It's groundwater, but it's flowed in, it's gotten into our pipes. And so we just redid the, relined the pipes that go all the way across the mill property. Um, and then they're also going to be, they are going to be lining some manholes that basically the water just pours into those. And so there, this, it'll be interesting to see how much that project helps with the INI, which is inflow and infiltration, and if it can reduce some of that, that we struggle with in the winter time at this plant right here. Okay, next slide. All right, wastewater treatment plant. And we are, we have been approved for funding through DEQ. We went to a one-stop meeting, which is where they bring all the funders together USDA, DEQ, Business Oregon, and they try to like, um, everybody makes their best offer and they do combinations of offers and tries to see what's the best that we can do. Because we're going to need to get a loan for this. And so right now we're just getting a loan for the engineering portion of it, engineering and permitting, anything that is no, no shovel in the ground. They'll let us spend this money on because, and that's, it's up to three and a half million dollars. We only have to take what we need. But it's because they don't have all the rules in place for all the infrastructure funding that's coming out. So the recommendation was that we just get the engineering funding. And then next year, when we, because right now all we can get is a half a million dollars of a forgivable loan off a $25 million loan, which doesn't, that wasn't what we were hoping for. So next year we'll go, we'll keep working with them. They're very eager to help us, which is really nice. But to also see that there's several million dollars that we could get and grant our forgivable loans. And that would help, you know, in having to pay that back. So right now where we're at, we have the, the loan is in the works. It's just, we're just finishing up paperwork for that engineering part. Um, the RFP on the right-hand side, we have put out a request for proposals for an engineer because our city engineer, Karen McLeod, is too small to manage that project. And so they, we put out a RFP, actually, they've been getting calls because companies know that because of the size of the project, we have to put out a RFP. But if the city engineer is going to bid on that or submit a proposal that we're going to go with the city engineer. So they're all calling Karen McLeod now and saying, hey, are you putting in a proposal, which he's not. So we are, we're having on Tuesday, a meeting here with any engineering firm that's interested. They can come and ask questions, you know, and talk about what the process is. And it costs several thousand dollars for them to put together a proposal, which, you know, there will be one successful company. So anyway, that's where we are, that we hope to have them on board by January and they will, they'll confirm the system, confirm system needs and design the improvements, which means that it'll be great. Because right now we're, we have a plan that's approved by DEQ, but we are going to have them re-look at it and just say, hey, is this the right way? Are we doing what we should be doing? Should we bring it back to the industrial campus? Are we pushing it too far north? You know, is this the right process? So we'll have brand new eyes on it to just take a look and make sure that we're on the right track. And then they'll do all the engineering and permitting through the next year. Um, we are working on a land purchase. We're in the appraisal process right now. So if that goes through, that would be, that would be the easy way to do it if we, because we have a willing seller. Otherwise, we'll have to look around for another piece of property in that vicinity and, and work on that again. But we've already started working on it and so far we haven't hit any roadblocks other than it takes forever to get an appraisal nowadays, apparently. Um. Let's see. And then, so the plan is engineering in the year 2023. It'll take all year. And then we'll construct in 2024 and probably part of 2025 and have it up and running. Any questions on that?
I got a lot of questions.
Okay, all right. I'll keep, should I keep going?
Is that meeting open to the public?
Um, I don't know. I suppose it would be. It can be a fly on the wall. Let's see who wants to, we're just going to be in here and they can ask current questions. And yeah, you want to stop in? I'm sure that would be fine. It's, I don't remember what time it is. Let's see what time it is. I think it's at 10, but I'm not sure. So I'll confirm that on Tuesday. But yeah, it will be interesting to see who is interested in the job. It's a big job. But let's see. Okay, we'll keep going and then Ben can ask questions. Next, next slide. Concurrent with building the plant, the new plant will build an Eagle Creek pump station. And that will help with the, that's dependent on the, to service. Let's see, I have more notes here. Um. Oh, it's part of this. We should, Kurt has said that we should anticipate the need to construct this Eagle Creek pump station. And the three developments that have already been proposed would be dependent on that, that station, which is Coyote Ridge, Dugan, three through seven, and Northbrook up in that northern area. So this would be part of the kind of bill at the same time as the new plant will be built. Next slide. Okay, just a couple of fun things. If you've been up Wade Street, we finished to add some sidewalks in there between the gas station and the skate park. So that's a solid sidewalk now, which is a benefit. We added some sidewalks on the other side of the street also repaid because that was just a mess there. So that has been completed at the same time. Uh, we thought we were doing that last year, but it ended up rolling into this fiscal year. At the same time, we did the whole Edge Hill foothills community. So if you haven't driven around up there, go and take a look up there. Because that part of it was, I think in the seventies was when it was constructed, the road and everything. And then later on, it was like in the late nineties, I want to say. Um, so it was in much better shape, but it actually, we didn't even have to grind it because it had only like two inches of asphalt on it in the first place. So we just put that final lift on finally in that upper Edge Hill area. And the rest, add a couple ADA ramps, add an ADA ramp across Cemetery Road so that they can get on the sidewalk there. And anyway, that was a great project. So that's just wrapping up. Next slide. Main Street, we're getting ready to redo Main Street and bring it out of the seventies or whatever it looks like right now. Um, adding some pedestrian amenities, doing some, making it, doing some bump outs where it's easier for people to cross the street, adding some lighting and other pedestrian type amenities, putting the power underground, making it look a little more included into the, not just the street you drive past on, but it could be more included into the downtown. So we're planning to do that with urban renewal funds. We'll get a loan for that and then pay it back with the urban renewal funds over the next however many years it, it takes to do that. And that is anticipated to happen next spring, early summer. I'm hoping to do it like March, April, May, and then get out of there. But it's going to be interesting. Yeah. Okay. No great, there's no great detour for Main Street is all I can say. But we'll figure out the best way we can do and get it done as fast as possible. Next slide. Okay, Hillway connection is coming up next summer. That'll take some, some stress off of six, especially in school start, school stop times, which it gets a little crazy up there. And this will connect from where Hillway hits Cemetery Road and then it'll put it through to the Campanella community. And that, it was built to, built to be a road that can handle the traffic to take it out to Wade or Eagle Creek Highway there. That's planned. It's, has to be done in the summer because it goes across the creek or the runoff there. So we have to do that between July 15th and August 30th, I think, is the, what the Corps of Engineers will permit for in-water work. So we're gearing up for that one. Next, is that the end? Oh, no, wait, there's more. Herb ramp improvements. We got a CDBG grant. We apply for that through the county. And so Uptown Broadway and Main Street are very subpar when it comes to the ADA ramps there. Sometimes they don't even exist. And so the city's match is about, it might be more like 39,000 when all is said and done. But we're just going to go up and have ADA ramps put up there on the corners. Um, okay, next. I think that's all. Oh, no, we're going to update system development charges. In fact, Kurt and Elena and I were just talking about that today because with the new information that we have, we need to update our SDCs to incorporate the wastewater facility plan. We'll update transportation SDCs when we get the TSP update done. Um, and then the, all he is saying here, that the remaining infrastructure would benefit by having some updates. We were talking about the storm sewer and sanitary sewer. Well, that would be the plant, I guess. But especially the storm sewer needing to be updated. So that development is paying for the development, you know, appropriately, not just depending on, you know, being a burden on what's already here, but they'll can make their contributions to that as it develops and help with whatever we need to do. So we're going to be working on some system development charge updates. And I do believe that is all. Are there questions quickly? I've talked a lot longer than I wanted to.
Does the SEC changes, do they have to go before the voters? Or did that 3% thing go away that was voted in 10 years ago?
Um, that, that went away. So it, the SEC update does not go to the voters, but it would be approved by the city council. And I haven't gone through one of those updates before, so it'll be a learning experience. And Kurt kept saying, we need to do this. I'm like, if we need to do this, does that mean you need to do this? He's like, yeah. So, but it will take a few months because it'll, it'll be a bit of a process. And so they will, as our engineering firm, they'll walk us through that. Other questions?
I have a question. Can you remind us what Kurt said about the current sewage system capacity? And, you know, what, what we're at and how long that will last with the product, the projects that are already approved?
Mm-hmm. We are nearing 80%, I think is what, I shouldn't use percentages because I, I don't, I didn't write that down. Um, but we are, as long as we keep moving this forward, we aren't in danger of having to stop, you know, call stop. I know there's other neighboring communities that have experienced that. I also learned that other neighboring communities have, what's it called? They, like, they have a, they subcontracted it out. The wastewater treatment system was subcontracted out to be run. It was not run by the city. I didn't know that till recently, and I think that is, has a lot to do with some of the situations that they're facing. But I not speak to them, but we are, I can't remember if it's close to 80%. Um, and with the housing, the housing, we can add a lot of houses. It's like if we had a big industrial user that wanted to come in, it was going to use a lot of water and a lot of wastewater. That we, that would be more challenging. That would take up a lot of capacity with just the one user. If there was somebody that wanted to come in, because things come out from Business Oregon from time to time, people looking for property. And so that is where I think we'd have to be more careful. But as far as like how much, I, I can't really say like for certain the timeframe and the number of houses. But we're, we are matching that pace for pace is what I would say. We are not slowing down on getting this built. We'll have it built in the next three years max. And it's really our, our winter time flow through the plant that is the, causes the most trouble. And with the I and I work that we're doing, that will help also. So that's a vague answer. I know Tara. But I can get, I can work on getting a little more specific answer on percentages.
Okay, thanks.
In the event we don't get a loan for the wastewater treatment plant, what's plan B? Good. I, I kind of missed that. Was it a half million dollars for the total cost that was a USDA?
No. So the, we're getting a three and a half million dollar loan from, through DEQ for the engineering and any pre-construction type of work. And then the whole project is in 25 to 30 million dollars. So after, but that's what we're going to ask for after. They've already, DEQ has already said they'll loan us the whole thing. They just didn't make a very good offer right now. With the half a million dollars was what they'll do as a forgivable loan. And when you're borrowing $25 million, I would like to get six, seven, eight million dollars forgivable loan or grant through them. And with the infrastructure programs that are coming out, there is going to be a lot of money available for infrastructure. And I think that next year they will be able to make us a better deal, which is why we only borrowed them out for the engineering. But they did. And Kurt was very happy about that. He called us right after we got off the phone with them because he's like, it's good to know. They will loan us the whole amount. We're going to do a rate study in the very near future because they're going to want that to say, hey, where are you at? Where do you need to be at? And so we'll have to hire a company to do a rate study for us and then to line out what our rate increases will need to be in order to cover the loan. So that is yet to come.
And are those rate increases voted on by the people or are they voted on by city council?
They, they are voted on by city council, proposed by staff and then voted on by city council. And I'd seen another city, recently they had the rate study done. And then they also had lined out in a resolution that the city council passed. At this point, we'd, you know, go up this mountain and later on this mountain so that they could get to what they need to do, to do to cover the debt. And right now, Estacate is one of the lowest rates in the county. So it will, the sewer rate will be going up to cover, to help cover this cost. Yeah.
Any other questions? Richard, you got to have something.
I'll say that.
All right.
Uh, there's a time at a later point in the meeting, we can have you come up and ask questions there for, for public comment. Is that all right? That's the way it normally works.
We're looking off of Folsom Road, up at, at the end of Folsom, close to the river. So, and it's not for certain yet. And we haven't, we've kind of drawn a circle like in the area where the houses are. The idea is to get it as isolated as possible. So that's where, that's where we're looking around and at the end of Folsom. I hope. And.
Where the wind blowing.
This, this plant does not have any type of odor system that, it'd be, it just, it is what, it's all out there. So the new plant will definitely have some odor control. I'm never getting, not going to say that it's never going to have odor. But it will be tremendously improved as far as the, any type of odor there is. And the water that we put back in the river will be really high quality. So that'll be good. All right.
Now I have a question.
Okay.
So if that happens to be the property, then will that property get annexed into the city limits?
No, because it's outside the urban growth boundary. So that it cannot be annexed. And so that's why we would be looking at, I believe it's a permanent easement that we would have there. And that's one of the first things these engineers will look at, the idea of putting it out there, number one. And then number two, how is the, is the county going to let us do it? And how that permitting process goes. And then number three is, we have to move where the mixing zone, where we put the effluent into the river up here, we'd have to get approval to do it down, downstream, which should, I think is better. It's not going into the reservoir, which is more stillwater. It's going into the, you know, the flowing river, but we have to get permission for that. So those are some of the first things they'll be looking at.
Are there any other alternative sites and locations?
Um, not that we're really, not that we've pursued yet. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then when did you say that engineering powwow was?
Tuesday morning. I think it's at 10, but I'll double check.
Okay.
I believe that you guys could, could come and listen in. I don't see why I don't.
Yeah, I got a scratch an itch. Is this done by Bonnie Luer?
Not.
On Eagle Creek?
No, not on Eagle Creek.
It doesn't go that far.
Nope, not that far. No. Kind of in the vicinity of the golf course would be ideal. So we'll, but we'll see how it, how it pans out. Okay, I need to let you guys move on unless there's anymore.
Was there an engineering study that suggested that site?
Um, yes. So Karen McLeod, our city engineer is the one who they looked at, we looked at leaving it where it is, putting it maybe in the rock quarry, but the property owners were, they weren't, I mean, that seems like that would be ideal. But the, there was not a. But the there was not a, the property owners weren't agreeable to it. And we looked in the industrial campus, which is a possibility. And then Hypal, which the council was like, you know, there's too many people, you know, when you're going out Hypal, kind of where it goes down by the river. There's a lot of people that live down there. So so we pushed out Folsom. And the the city council and our city engineer both agreed that looking long. Because we're looking fifty years down the road, which. I wouldn't have thought that we're seeing what we're seeing. I couldn't have imagined what we're seeing now. So I don't know, you know, fifty years down the road, what is it going to be like? I don't know. But they're trying to think long term. They're trying to think where is it going to be? So that it is, you know, more isolated. It's not. Right where some, you know, there's a bunch of other industrial uses. That's so it was our city engineer that recommended it and the council liked it, like the idea. And so now we'll have this other engineering company come in, take a look, see what they think and go from there. We could pull it back to the industrial campus. There's not, there's not, I mean, it would be just as hard to get it to the river as it would elsewhere, so. So all that to say, city staff and this team and all the city staff is working really hard to make things move forward. We're not just waiting and wondering, you know, what's going to happen. We're pushing forward to make sure that we can support the growth that has already happened and that is coming in the future. And so it's, it's so far, it's looking good. I mean, we haven't hit major roadblocks with anything. Other than your your sewer bill will be going up. So, yeah.
Any other questions for Melanie? It's out here. Thanks, Melanie, for the update.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for letting me take that time at the beginning.
All right, now back to the regularly scheduled programming of a public hearing.
Didn't they have some questions?
Are you good?
So and we do have a kind of a straight shot as far as how we could pipe, you know, run the pipe out there. So as a pro line, it's not as far as anywhere we were on the road. We'll see, that's the plan at this point, and we're pushing forward.
Okay.
That's where our planning is right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's go on to the subdivision application twenty twenty two dash zero one dash S. Greenworks Contractors LLC. Yes? We're all. Surely didn't.
You're welcome.
We need to do the approval of the September twenty second, twenty twenty two meeting, meeting minutes. Need a motion and a second. I'll second it. We got a motion, we got a second. Do we have any discussion on that? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Tara? We had five in-house. Tara, you still with us?
Yeah, sorry, just it always takes a second to unmute. Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay. Bruce, six oh. Um, now we can move on to that public hearing. I've been mentioning several times. Uh, staff, you want to go ahead with the staff report?
All right. So this is. Land use application file number twenty twenty two dash zero one dash S called Coyote Ridge. This planning commission hearing tonight is the first of two. The city council will make the final, will issue a final decision. On Monday, November fourteenth. And that is a final decision unless it is appealed to Luba. Okay. Um, so this is the view of the subject property. You all have the preliminary plat in front of you. Sorry, Tara, that you didn't get a printed one. So it's, it involves four tax lots. Tax lot three hundred, two zero one, seven hundred and four hundred, all outlined in yellow here. The preliminary layout looks like this. It has a total of two hundred and twenty four lots. Two of them are larger lots that are intended for multifamily develop, the development. Those are over here, if you can see my cursor, over here in the North City Residential Zone adjacent to Eagle Creek. Uh, Eagle Creek Road. The North City Residential Zone. The rest of the lots are smaller lots intended for single family homes. There are three private streets which will double as public utility easements. There are two stormwater facility tracks, which we'll look more closely at in a second. And there's one tract for the significant wetland that's on site. There's an open space tract. There are several landscaped common areas. And all of those tracts are proposed to be owned and maintained by a homeowners association. There's also a seventy foot buffer around Curran Creek to prohibit development around the creek. Um, here's just basically a list of those main components of the project that I just described. And then here is the development shown on our comprehensive plan map. So you can see it's split between the NCR or North City Residential Zone. That's the orange striped zoning. And then on the west side, it is zoned R dash one, low density residential. It would be surrounded by. These neighboring subdivisions that are not yet built out, but that have been approved. So Dugan Estates, phases one and two are this kind of long north-south property to the west. Dugan Estates, phases three through seven are the property directly north of this part in the R one zone. Northbrook is directly north of the part in the North City Residential Zone. And then Eagle Ridge at Curran Creek, phases one and two are to the south of this property. In, I guess, those subdivisions have all three of this central mixed use zoning in blue. North City Residential and then R one. So it's surrounded by all of these already approved subdivisions. You can contact the planning division if if you have questions that don't get answered in the presentation tonight. I want, I'm, and I apologize, but I'm not going to, we're not going to take questions from the public until the time that they take questions. Because we have a lot to get through. Um, okay, so we're going to look first at the public improvements that they're proposing, starting with utilities. They're proposing to bring water from extensions of the line that's being constructed for phases one and two of Eagle Ridge, which is that subdivision to the south. And also, if the subdivisions to the north or east develop sooner, they would make additional connections to loop the system coming off of the twelve inch main from Eagle Creek Road. And the city engineer also noted in his comments that the water line will need to complete a loop between the northwest Douglas Allen Street cul-de-sac and northwest Grand Creek Drive. So that is the cul-de-sac at the far northwest corner over here. So they'll just have a condition of approval to close the loop of the water line there. Next, we look at their sewer plan, which will connect to a lift station that the city is constructing to the north. And that will serve the majority of the lots in this development. And it will also serve some of those other developments that we just talked about. There will be a force main running through one of the new local streets, discharging to a gravity sewer manhole at the south end of the site, which is at the north end of that Eagle Ridge subdivision phase one. They're also, they're going to bore a sewer line under Curran Creek between the cul-de-sac of Street four W and the north end of Street F, which is shown here. And this is, um, the two sides of the creek are shown on different pages of their utility plan. So I just, uh, cut out, cut those out and tried to align them. So I'm sorry if it looks wonky, but you can see where the line will connect underneath the creek there. The rest of the lots ultimately will connect to the sanitary sewer lines that will be constructed in the Eagle Ridge developments to the south.
Tailor on that sanitary line board under Curran Creek. It said four W on there. Did it mean to say three W?
Um, yeah, either. So there would either be, we'll make sure that's fixed. That's, that's definitely what I meant. It it would either be, one of those is a typo. It's referring to the same thing.
A three, three W makes sense. I just couldn't find four W on the map and I just didn't know if I wasn't seeing it. So that, I think three W is right.
So I think it's three W, yeah. For, I think next is stormwater. So there are two stormwater facilities proposed, which will be in tracks D and E. And in their narrative and plans, they explain how the runoff on the property will drain in each of these directions and be collected in the wet ponds. So those stormwater tracks are shown on the plans here where the green stars are. And so here's the first one in the northeastern corner of the site, tract D. Um, so you see that one right just to the north of one of the multifamily, the larger NCR tracks zone for multifamily, intended for multifamily. And then the second one is in the western part, tract E. Looks like that. Surrounded by lots intended for single family homes. Um, so there's also tracks and buffer areas proposed to preserve the significant wetlands. And also to preserve seventy feet from the Curran Creek High Water Mark. Um, so those areas will either be maintained by the HOA or be part of private property that's just not allowed to be developed. So here, this is where you can see tract L. Where my cursor is, containing the significant wetland. Which does include this buffer area on the east side of Curran Creek within the NCR zone, which prohibits development within the creek or within seventy feet of the creek. And then they also show a buffer area on the west side of Curran Creek where the lots are allowed to be platted much closer in the R one zone. But still, they would record this prohibition on development within seventy feet of the creek. Um, so that would be shown on the plat and recorded with the deed for those properties. So looking at streets, so there are obviously a ton of new streets in the property. It's a large development. They're proposing mostly new public local streets. Uh, one exception is Curran Creek Drive is a major collector. So Curran Creek Drive. Will connect this, this is the, this is what River Mill Road turns into after it crosses Eagle Creek Road. And so that that street is a major collector. It'll have bike lanes and it's a wider cross section. So that will be connected to the Eagle Ridge Development to the east of this part of the development. And then on the west side of that, it will connect to the Dugan Estates Development, which. That collector will, will be built through Dugan Estates, all of the phases of Dugan Estates. And then it goes through Faraday Hills and then turns south and connects down to the Cascadia Ridge Developments. So it'll complete that eventually. They are also proposing three private streets, um, which would just have sidewalk on one side. And they're, they're proposing to paint the curb and have no parking signs to prevent parking. Um, since, uh, private streets can be. Much narrower than public streets, so you want to prevent parking. Um, they'll also be doing half-street improvements on Southeast Eagle Creek Road. All of that would be permitted through Clackamas County since it's Clackamas County right of way. And then they're also going to need to ex- extend, um, street one W to the south to stub at the border to allow for future development of these properties. So one W is this street on the eastern side of things here. And so you can see it stops at Street A before coming all the way down to the edge of the site here. And so we're recommending a condition of approval to punch that all the way through. Because these, these properties in here are, there's no other. You know, when these properties eventually develop, there needs to be another way for them to get access other than just directly from Eagle Creek Road, which is a major collector, and we want to minimize accesses onto that street. So that is captured in the conditions of approval. And then looking at, um, traffic issues generally. The traffic impact study for this project showed two intersections failing and needing some kind of major mitigation. And so those are the intersections of River Mill and Eagle Creek Road. And then also the intersection of Highway two twenty four and Hypal, which is outside of our UGB to the north. So, um. Here's the, here's where those intersections are. The southern X here is River Mill and Eagle Creek. The green star is the, is roughly where the subdivision is. And then the northern X is the intersection of Hypal and two twenty four. So, um, the River Mill Road intersection will be failing regardless of whether the subdivision is built. Um, and that's just because so much traffic from other parts of the city, as the whole city grows, um, are using that intersection or and more traffic will be using that intersection with the other new developments coming online. So in order to resolve that issue, it either needs a roundabout or a traffic signal, both of which are way more expensive than what we could require one developer to cover. And ideally, our TSP would have that intersection improvement adopted as a project that we include in our capital improvement plan. And we would then be able to fund that construction with SDCs. Um, but we don't have that project in our plans, and so we currently don't have a mechanism for getting it built. Um, so the applicants are proposing something that is often done in other jurisdictions, um, which is calculate their proportion of the, um, the impact to that intersection and then pay that proportion of the estimated cost of the mitigation. So for example, if the roundabout was going to cost three million dollars and this development is responsible for two percent of the usage of that roundabout, they would pay two percent of the three million dollars, which would be sixty thousand dollars. And so the same proportionality is proposed for the Hypal Road intersection, which needs a turn lane and an exit lane. Um, and so their analysis showed that that, that their development contributes one percent of the usage at the Hypal intersection. So they would pay one percent of the estimated cost of that needed project.
And sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
For that, so we're, we just, we let them in their study decide what amount of traffic their. Um, project is generating and how much they'll pay as a result.
Their study, we require, um, the traffic impact study. We now require the TISs for subdivisions to be, um, the scope of those studies to be reviewed and approved by our designated transportation engineers who are DKS, the firm, um, who's doing our TSP right now. So those, those numbers were, or those calculations. Would be reviewed by DKS and if they just disagreed. And also by Kurt, who reviews the application once it comes in. So yes, it is done by their traffic engineers, but it's also reviewed and concurred with by ours.
Okay, I just ask because, uh, I I'm, I guess I'll pull up a few old ones to see, but. Okay, I just ask, cause uh I, I'm, I guess I'll pull up a few old ones to see, but. This, some of these intersections look a lot rosier in this analysis than they have. There were, there were more failed intersections in that area. With, with stuff that we um. Looked at months and months ago, but. Um, anyway, that's, that's my question, sorry.
Just thinking out loud, Tara, that might be because those. Like at the Hypal intersection, if the, the one coming off Deuce Road has a bigger impact on it, because they're not coming on to River Mill, everything's directed. Onto Hypal. I don't know if that's actual.
Yeah, I mean, the, the one that. That stuck out was the um, the River Mill two twenty-four one um. I seem to remember one of the more recent things that was already gonna be at an S. Um, but I, I, I'll just, I'll need to go through and find something and see if that's actually the case, but. That, the, the number of trips that it, that this was supposedly generating also seemed like wildly low to me relative to. Other studies, but um, yeah, we could talk about that later, sorry to interrupt.
It's alright.
No worries. So um. So that, so they're proposing this proportional um contribution, um, and. We've had um several conversations back and forth with the county and ODOT. About how to address these issues, because neither, um, well, first of all, because neither of. The intersections are actually under our jurisdiction, the county owns um Eagle Creek Road and Hypal. Um, and then the state would permit any um, anything accessing the highway, so um. In order to apply this condition or figure out that path forward, we needed to know what the county and ODOT would approve. Um, and this is the solution that they were able to agree to, um, and it is. Hopefully, an interim solution, since the uh city is currently updating our TSP. We are intending to um include that needed intersection improvement at River Mill and Eagle Creek. Um, so it would either be a roundabout or a traffic signal. And so um, once that project gets adopted into our TSP, then, like I said, we can charge SDCs to cover the cost. Of that project, um, at which point we wouldn't even need the proportional contribution from this project, because they would. They would contribute proportionally upon paying SDCs, um, however, since the TSP adoption is still a long ways off. Um, we can't guarantee that this project will be adopted, so we're proposing to require this proportional contribution. Um, as like an interim solution, just in case we're not able to get that intersection included in our C I uh capital improvement plan. And the same thing would go for the other intersection, which would need to get included in Clackamas County's TSP. Um, and they are about to begin an update on their TSP. Um, so that's something that could happen before these folks come into plat, there's lots. The county also indicated they might be able to get an interim TSP amendment done, um, which would allow them to. To add that project into their plan um even sooner. So I guess those are things that we'll, we'll just have to find out, you know, how, how quickly those things can happen. Um, but in the meantime, if neither of those things happened, we would still be able to collect um contribution toward resolving those issues. Um, and then. At least for the purpose of covering this development's impact on those issues. Um, so the update to condition number eighteen here. Is uh basically in order to, if we get the projects adopted into our capital improvement plans. Before they're ready to plat, then this condition would become void, so if they had paid us. The proportional contribution towards those improvements, and then we got the project adopted into our CIP, we'd be able to reimburse them. Or if um, if they had already platted the lots, um, you know, and paid. That proportional contribution, then we'd be able to um discount or um. What's the word I'm looking for, like pro-rate, we'd be able to provide um SDC credits when they come in for the building permits. Yeah. I'm gonna move on from that, but I, I will welcome questions on that uh at the end. One other requirement in the um conditions is for Tramit bus stops, um, so one of the chapters. Um, of the code is sixteen point one one eight, this is about pedestrian access and transit. Which requires any development that's adjacent to a bus stop must provide transit access according to Tramit standards. Um, so we, we did just get preliminary comments from Tramit on this yesterday. Which um outlined their general requirements, um, they. Did indicate they would um provide more specific, more specifics, um. So we'll, we'll just have to send those along to the applicants and follow up with any details there, um, but basically, they're gonna, they're gonna wanna see a. Bus access to the curbed, it would either be a marked bus zone or no parking area. And um curb site tidewalk or a pad in the planting strip to accommodate people getting on or off the bus. And there's standards around how all of that needs to get built. So right now, the conditions of approval, um, just say that they need to follow whatever requirements Tramit have, Tramit has. Um, and if we get more specifics on that, we'll be able to add those specific standards as conditions in the council's. Um, decision file. So um, in general, the conditions of approval capture all of those requirements that I've just described throughout this presentation. Um, they are all, you can read them all at the end of the staff report. And then on this slide, I'm also calling out um three changes to the conditions of approval. Um, so uh those, you would not see those in the version of the report that's published online right now. Um, so those changes are condition number one. Doesn't need to be this specific about what uses are allowed um on the new lots. That is something that the underlying zone um already establishes, so I'm, I'm just striking this language that. Is more prescriptive than it needs to be, we would not be able to um enforce. You know, only allowing single-family, detached, single-family dwellings on these lots that are in a zone, which also allows other things. For example, so just fixing that up a little bit, um, we changed condition number eighteen, that was the proportional contribution change that I just described. Then we also added condition number sixty-four, um, this is something. That we should be requiring for every subdivision to help um mitigate the impacts of construction traffic for. Um, neighbors, you know, as the um development. You know, as they're building the streets and the public improvements, um, it's something that we hear a lot of. Concerns and complaints about for some of the other developments that are being built, and so we just want to make sure that. Before they start development, the applicant, um, you know, shows us how they're planning to manage the traffic during construction. Um, and you know, get to talk through that with us during a pre-con meeting or something like that before they start their site work, so we're proposing that. Sixty-fourth condition. And then lastly, I didn't get this into. The PowerPoint, so I'm gonna pull up a piece of testimony that we did receive. One second. Doesn't want me to end the slideshow. Um, a piece of testimony that we received from. Joseph Foreman and Rick Halverson. Uh, Joseph Foreman of seven five seven Nineteen Gale Street, Livermore, California. And Rick Halverson and Diana Halverson of four seven one seven Thorman Avenue Northeast. Thorman Avenue, Avenue Northeast, Kaiser, Oregon. And their property location, okay, is two nine six zero five Southeast Eagle Creek Road in Estacada. Um, so I will read the letter. Um, regarding the subdivision, we are opposed to the subdivision, we believe that a full environmental impact study needs to be completed. Before the city even considers another subdivision, the city needs to address the current traffic on Eagle Creek Road. Um, how will residents of this new subdivision be able to enter and exit, and where will the interest be located at? Um, is the city planning on installing a traffic light to control traffic? How will they be able to get to Highway two twenty-four, which is already overloaded with vehicles? Are they going to install traffic lights on River Mill Road and? Both at Eagle Creek Road and Highway two twenty-four to help control the new influx of vehicles. The city needs to address the sewer issues that the subdivision will create, the current plant is at capacity, so what is the city's plan to do with the waste? Um, are they gonna build a new plant, and if so, where? Is the city gonna tear up the current roads to install larger pipes to transport this waste to a different location, and what is the cost of this? The city needs to address where the water for this, for these new residents are gonna come from. Does the city have a plan for where the water will come from, and what impact will this have to current residents for those that are on the current system? And to those that have wells, loss of water pressure, higher water bills to help pay for the new pipes or contaminated well water. The city needs to address runoff from both the building phase and after constructions completed. The land in question is currently open fields and in the past had trees on it. What happens when all the bulk of the water that was absorbed into the ground is now sent running into the storm drain or the ditches? Is the city going to improve the current system to address it? And is the builder going to ensure that during construction, they will manage the runoff and ensure it doesn't pollute any of the local streams? With the water not going into the ground, what impact will this have on anyone that uses well water? The city needs to address the electrical grid as well, how is this new area to receive power? More overhead power lines, or is the builder gonna pay to run them underground? Also, what is the current load on the electrical system, and what will these additional homes do to it? The city needs to address the need for additional fire and police services as it continues to expand. Finally, the city needs to assure those residents that live outside city limits that they will not be annexed into the city against their will. The city continues to grow and expand its borders, however, not all growth is good. Many of the current people that live in the area have done so for years and have no wish to live in a subdivision. Okay. So with that, um, I think we're ready for questions from the commissioners, and then we can. Um, hear from the applicant if they have any comments or a presentation, and then we can hand it over to public testimony.
Questions? But that was my question. Okay, on this development here, and you did a great oratory on that. My uh. Thoughts came down to. Did the city of Estacada give up anybody that's putting in a twenty-acre parcel of houses? To provide parks, green spaces, trails? Has that gone away? Nowhere in this plan do I see that.
Right, so are you referring to a requirement?
We had it in, in the past for, and maybe Ben and Tom remember that. I know we had it for Sastrum, and we had it for uh Espinoda, Darryl Road, uh. There were several of them. But I haven't seen it in this plan.
And so your question is.
Twenty acres and over had to provide green space, I mean, Capinellas did. And so I wondered if we got away from that, or. I had, I did not ever get a memo that we changed those, those uh policies.
So you, how, our um. Park, let's see, our code, I'm opening up our code right here, um. Our code in the land division section of our code um does. Encourage developers to provide park space, but it doesn't require.
We're gonna have two hundred and twenty-four new houses for families, and no place for bicycles. For kids, or greens places for kids and dogs, and you know, I. I look at the little things, you, you hit on the big things, so that's what we're here for, is to ask little questions that might turn big.
Does that make sense? Yeah, and I, I don't recollect the twenty-acre thing, I don't, I don't doubt you on it at all.
Tom would probably remember it, okay.
What, and so that was. And then what's the Sastrum one?
Uh, he was on uh. Where did the old mayor live? Gilway? Yeah, okay. They've got ten-foot trails, walkways, easements, whatever have you, as well as uh. Trails up and down their creeks and that kind of stuff. And then uh they put in a park. Sure, that was Sastrum, wasn't it?
It's Caserole Heights up there.
Caserole Heights.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a center loop with a whole bunch of houses around it.
Yeah.
I helped build the uh infrastructure.
So, so that went away then?
I don't, I don't know what would have been in here that would have gone away, but I can read what we have, which is item M. As in mother of sixteen point one one six says parks. The developer is encouraged but is not required to dedicate parkland serving the development. And the residents of the city. Only parkland which in the sole discretion of the city meets the standards and requirements of the section below. And as provided by this title, in this title or by resolution, will be maintained by the city and be eligible for a credit against park SDCs.
Oh, you ever remember that going away?
No.
I don't either.
I um, I remember going through the thing and, and I, I was one of these that. Yeah, now the city has to maintain parks.
That's right.
I wasn't really that supportive of it, but you know, the rest of the commission at the time. Thought it was a really good idea because of what Richard just said, the kids gets off their street. I, you know, like I said, I, I, so somehow that got off the books, and we don't, I, I don't know how.
So.
You're, you're, you're not, you're not required to put in a skateboard park in every development, but just someplace, walk your dog, walk your kids.
And not, not in Swin.
Brad, we'll have you come up in a minute here, okay? That's alright.
Yeah, so I, I found the section that I bet you're thinking of, which is in sixteen point one one six point. Zero two zero, minimum standards for park, for park and recreation land. And the purpose of that section is to implement the policies of goal five and goal eight of the city's comprehensive plan. And the city parks master plan by outlining standards for parks and recreational facilities in the city, so we have standards for them. It is the policy of the city that the availability of adequate and accessible parks, open spaces and recreational land is an important component of residential neighborhoods. Parks and recreational lands meet the recrea- meet the recreational needs of the ci- citizens of Estacada. The goal of reserving suitable and adequate parks and recreational land is best realized through the creation of parks at the time. That new residential neighborhoods, subdivisions and multifamily housing are created. Okay, we agree with all of that, item. B is about what parkland qualifies for SDC credits. Um, item C is the criteria for dedicating um. In lieu of payment of park SDCs, and then a subitem under that. So now we're in the section about um dedicating parkland. In exchange for not having to pay SDCs, that's where there's this calculation of land required to be dedicated. Um, blah, 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 based upon the adopted standard of twenty acres of land per one thousand ultimate population. Um, so I think that's probably the section of code that you're thinking about, but. Nowhere in that section does it contradict what it says above, which is that. The developer is encouraged but not required to dedicate parkland.
It's been changed.
It's been changed, but I do not know, being here the whole time, I wasn't privy to any change to that. So what you're saying is they can pay an SDC for parks. So what you're saying is they could pay an SDC for parks and not have to put one in.
The same as everybody else.
It was not changed here.
The same as everybody else that's had a development in their recent history.
But that's still a change in what it was. So-
Well, and we can, we can ask Brad to come up and comment.
My, 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 my personal thought was for green spaces and how wide are these streets? Is there on street parking or only one side of street parking or no parking on the street at all?
The streets are, I think it's a thirty-six foot pavement width. So that would accommodate parking on both sides. For, for, those are the local streets.
Doesn't Dugan Estates have some walkways and trails that they're gonna be putting in?
Yeah, um.
So you've got certain, and she's absolutely right. You've got certainest builders that are putting in trails, then they dead end when it goes into the next, the next developer. And it's not consistent. So it just seems kind of catch me if you can and don't catch me if you don't. So anyway, there, there, there's the thought that came to me during this presentation. You got, you got houses that are a mile from the nearest playground. Or more. Nobody's gonna have any more kids. I didn't think so.
She never said that.
Any other questions for Taylor at this point in time? Comments?
Tara? Um, I, yeah, I have a, I have a couple. I did, uh, just for fun, pull up, uh, what is it Lancaster Mobley or something, um, report from some various subdivision that we approved in November of twenty twenty-one and just looking at and I didn't get super deep into it, but just the background conditions of River Mill, um, at two twenty-four were, um, at E and D depending on the, the peak hours and with the with twenty twenty-five back, background conditions. And they'll be at E with, um, E and D in twenty twenty-five for the the build out conditions at this subdivision that we approved. And please keep in mind, we've can approved other ones in that area and other businesses and, and a trailer park and whatnot since then. And that those subdivi-, that exact intersection is at a C for the morning and a D in this one, um, in the current. And there's also a significant difference in the Deuce Road at Eagle Creek. Is, is considered to be much worse in the Lancaster Mobley one than in this one. So that gives me a lot of pause. I don't, I don't really feel like we have great information with this traffic study. And I'm also, I would, I'd like to know, you know, what, what the rationale was and moving forward when ODOT has asked for, it appears to have asked for us to wait and require additional traffic studies. Has something happened with that? Has that changed? Um, and then I also have a question about the the wetlands. It, the state appears to be asking for a can, for us to hold on an approval for this. I can't really tell on this January twenty-sixth thing if I'm reading it wrong. And I don't know if something has happened since then, but they're, they're saying that the study only includes a portion of some of the tax slots described. And they're, um, and they're saying that it, it sounds like they're saying there could, there could be issues and are asking for, for additional information. And that combined with the letter from the, the, one of the letters that was attached from area residents talking about how um, stormwater is flooding their property already. You know, it, it just is a little concerning. So I was wondering what, what had developed there.
So to your first question about the ODOT's comments, the originally submitted traffic impact analysis did identify, um, identified the intersection of Hypal and two twenty-four as failing. But it didn't identify what mitigation was needed. It just said further study um, will be needed in order to identify the mitigation. And I can see why the applicant or whoever was conducting the study would, would not have gone much farther into detail on that because that intersection is not just outside of our jurisdiction. Um, but it's entirely outside of our, our urban growth boundary. So it's, it's outside of our planning authority. Um, nonetheless, ODOT, like you correctly noticed, is required, required that further study to be done. And so they, you know, went back and did it and submitted the supplemental traffic analysis, which is also a, an exhibit in the packet. So the supplemental traffic analysis would be exhibit number four, right after the TIA. So once we had that supplemental analysis saying what mitigation was needed, um, that's when we were able to talk more with ODOT and confirm that if they are willing to pay the proportional contribution toward that mitigation, then ODOT and the county can work on getting that project included in their capital improvement plan. Um, and we can collect the proportional, uh, contribution at, in the interim. Um, but hopefully that project would be just included and captured in SDCs. We can, so, and, and we had several meetings with ODOT and so um, the, the kind of green light on this was through verbal conversations with ODOT, we can totally ask them for an updated, you know, comment or statement confirming that they agreed to what we're proposing now. Um, but that obviously we wouldn't have that here tonight, but, um, we could include that in the council's packet. And then your other question was about the wetland, something about the wetlands and we have a few different wetland things here. The most recent, um, wetland related exhibit would have been the DSL Wetland Land Use Notice Response, um, which is what the city gets in response to notifying uh, DSL that like, hey, we received the subdivision application. Often the subdivision applicants have already submitted um, their proposal to DSL, um, the Wetland Delination Report. Um, and so anyway, we, um, got a response from DSL saying they had received the delineation and they concurred with that delineation. Um, so I'm, do you know which exhibit it is that you're looking at that is, that seems to be-
I'm looking at exhibit eight, so I, maybe I missed an exhibit would be totally possible. It's a little bit confusing when they're in a bunch of PDFs and Word documents. But in a way, it's easier than when they're in a four hundred page packet. So I don't really, you know.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think I, I think I missed something then.
So exhibit eight is a letter from DSL to the applicant. Um, Wetland Delination Number, whatever is approved. Please note that the study area includes only a portion of some of the tax slots described above. We concur with the wetland and waterway boundaries. This concurrent. Um, so I think that the first part of that, so the first part of it says, yeah, please note that the study area includes only a portion of some of the tax slots. Um, I'm assuming that that's because there's a, there's a statewide, is it Nash? Well, there, there's both a national and statewide, um, wetland inventory. So you can go on there and, and see where wetlands have been identified officially. Um, and so those are the areas, I assume that, um, they were required to include in this delineation report. Um, that would be my assumption. I know that we've received letters like this before. So nothing, nothing seemed out of the ordinary to me about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Buck, I see your hand up. We're gonna, uh, finish up our discussion and we'll open it up for the engineers and the applicant. That's all right. Give us just a second here. Tara, did you get everything answered?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess, uh, it sounds like I was misunderstanding the wetland thing, um, or missing something. The traffic thing is a, is a big concern for me and I, I would like to there to, there to be some way of addressing the fact that it's, it's pretty different from an old study.
Okay. All right. Any other questions right now, guys? Gals? Okay. So let's do this. We're gonna, uh, close down the planning commission meeting real quick and we will open up the public hearing. I'm gonna read a statement and then we'll have the applicant and, uh, engineers come to the mic if they choose. So, uh, statement about evidence presented at this hearing, an issue which may be the basis for the appeal to the city council must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final evidentiary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford the city council and other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the city council and other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the city council on that issue. Uh, with the applicant, please come to the mic and make any comments concerning the application. Please state your name and, uh, address before beginning. Buck, I know you had your hand up. You wanna be the first guy? Jump up.
I think we have to allow them to, oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, excuse me. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to jump in first. I'm Buck Smith, uh, civil engineer with PBS Engineering and Environmental. And our address is four four one two South Corbett Avenue, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two three nine. Um, and, uh, the first thing I just wanted to address was, uh, yeah, about that, uh, the, the wetland report that said, you know, only portions of these lots. Uh, that is correct. We didn't do a hundred percent of these lots because, uh, when the sanitary sewer uh, main was constructed through what's gonna be, uh, future Current Creek Drive. Uh, another engineering firm, I believe, uh, AKS went in and then they did a wetland delineation in that swath of land. So in exhibit eight, uh, page nine at the very end, again, you can see a portion that's, that's not included um, in our analysis. And that's because it was done by, by another firm. And because that's valid for several years, um, we didn't have to go back and, and get that portion. So I just want to explain that, that, that's what was, uh, was um, intended to mean, uh, when it said that, you know, only portions of all of these lots instead of the, them in their entirety.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, that, other than that, um, yeah, to address stormwater concerns, uh, years ago, probably in the, um, sixties or seventies, uh, Current Creek, um, was, was kind of changed directions and it moves due north. Uh, and that's from the location, um, where the, uh, the neighbor sent in a letter, uh, tax lot two hundred, which is the, the lot in the middle of the property. Um, so about that point, uh, the creek shifts, uh, due north, which is, um, follows along property line. So it's not its original location. Uh, the original outfall of the creek is over by Eagle Creek Road, which is at the, uh, the, the northwest corner of our subdivision. And so that's the, the lowest part of the site. And so that's why we have a significant wet pond down there. Uh, that will be able to take all of the, the runoff generated, uh, safely bring it to that location and then, uh, release it slowly, uh, to the other side of Eagle Creek. So.
And just to be certain, that's track D, is that right, Buck? In the upper northwest corner?
I believe so. Let me-
Yeah, that, it's track D.
Yes.
And then it looks like on the stormwater front, track E um, kinda aligns with another already wet area. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that, that's correct. Um, along the, the north end of our, of our property there, there is, um, an existing irrigation ditch. And because of its age and then it, uh, contains water, it's a designated waterway. So at the north end of our lots that are east of Current Creek along that north property line, uh, that existing waterway is going to remain and, uh, and be protected.
We had a handful of questions. It looks like Anne Marie's, uh, raising her hand too. Would one of you guys like to speak on the transportation front, if possible? Brian, did Anne Marie need to be let in or could she speak freely?
This is Anne Marie Skinner. My address is, my uh, ad, residence address is six eight six Southeast Highway one oh one, number three zero five Lincoln City, Oregon, nine three six seven. And I guess I just, I'm not gonna go over any, uh, technical specifics. I just, uh, wanted to emphasize that the submitted preliminary plat and the submitted preliminary engineering uh, drawings and designs meet all of the required standards, the lot and block sizes and dimensions, the street layout and street connectivity, um, the sanitary sewer design, the water design, the stormwater design meets all of the required standards for those preliminary designs. I know that hopefully David Holt is here. He's the, uh, traffic engineer who prepared the traffic impact analysis and did additional work, uh, at the request of ODOT. And that is, that additional work is what resulted in the proportional mitigation to address, uh, the two intersections. And again, that was a result of that additional work. David, are you here?
Yeah, he's here. He's got his hand raised. And Brian, did you let him in too? David, if you just wanna, uh, go ahead and speak up, introduce yourself and address as well, then you can talk to the traffic impact study. David Holt?
Mute button. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we got you.
All right. David Holt is my name. I work with PBS Engineering and Environmental along with Buck. Same address, four four one two South Corbett Avenue, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two three nine. I can address, uh, I believe it was Tara's question earlier about why different studies are showing different results a little bit. And I believe it simply could have to do with the, the different baseline traffic counts that are collected, you know, across uh, span of time, there can be slight variations in traffic. And ODOT requires a, a seasonal adjustment factor on the highways to kind of account for that. Traffic tends to be higher on roadways like two twenty-four. Let's see a commuting pattern. Typically in the early to midsummer, uh, slightly lower in the winter months. And so audit requires that adjustment to be applied. And within those results too, because we're talking about an ODOT intersection, Highway two twenty-four at River Mill Road, I would draw your attention a little bit away from the letter grades, which I know- I would draw your attention a little bit away from the letter grades, which I know are easy to follow. The, the VC ratio refers to the volume to capacity ratio. In other words, how much of the available capacity is being consumed by the volume demand that's there? ODOT follows the VC ratio and uses that for their standards at their intersections. And pretty consistently in our study here for Katy Bridge, as well as for the various previous studies that were all incorporated and folded into ours. The, the VC ratios at that intersection remain comfortably low. ODOT would allow up to zero point nine. In other words, ninety percent of the available capacity to be consumed. And within our study, we were finding up to about seventy-one percent of that capacity being used. So plenty remains available above and beyond that according to the ODOT standard.
Tara, do you have any direct questions for David with regards to that traffic study?
No, I mean, I would just add that it wasn't just that roadway and it wasn't just that particular study that we've, it's that intersection has been labeled problematic in, in multiple studies that we've, that we've looked at for different projects and so is, you know, so is the other one that I mentioned at Deuce Road, but. Yeah.
I might speak then to the, the one at Deuce Road, Eagle Creek Road at Deuce Road. One of the prior subdivision approvals, I believe it was Faraday Hills, was required to construct as mitigation for their project and additional widening on Eagle Creek in order to provide a southbound left turn onto Deuce Road. And because that was a condition of approval and because we're including all of the Faraday Hills trips within this study, we included that improvement as part of our foundational analysis baseline conditions. So that may well be why these results look better. That was required mitigation, certainly in approved traffic conditions there.
Okay. To put a cherry on top of that, how does, how much time do we have? For Faraday Hills to complete those road improvements? I'm getting, I'm getting lost in all the names of the subdivisions. Which one is Faraday Hills? Is it the one just north of this?
Faraday Hills is, is currently being built, they're already building, so I'm not, I, it might be the Faraday Hills. I'm not sure. I didn't process that application, but it's the one that's the, to the farthest west out on Deuce. Sorry, east. Oh my God, have I been mixing up?
Yes.
This whole night. I'm sorry, everybody. Just reverse whatever I said.
So that's the Holt Homes development?
The Holt Development, yeah.
So should their feet be held to the fire? Not that this is their.
Should what?
Should their feet be held to the fire to get those improvements done?
So I'm not sure if it was a requirement for Faraday Hills. I know that the county is, the county has, uh, I forget the name of it. It's something like community improvement projects or something like that. Community improvement funds or something. They are improving the intersection of Deuce and Eagle Creek and they're providing a turn lane somewhere. I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where, but I know that the county is doing a project to improve that intersection. It's possible that one of the other developments also was required to. But if it, if it was to your question, Ben, if it was a requirement for a development, then they either would have had to construct it before plating or bond for it before plating. So if they bonded for it, then I, it, yeah, it would depend on what the timeline was.
Okay.
Related to that bond. I'm not sure though.
Okay. All right. So do we have any other questions for Anne Marie, Buck or David, all with PBS? At this point in time? Okay. Thank you guys for coming up and speaking on the Zoom call. Do we have any other app or any other people in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this application? Go ahead, Brett.
We have to have to get you on it.
My name is Brett Grantham. I'm the applicant. My address is three, three, zero, four, zero, Southeast Darrell Road, Estacada. A couple of things. One, I wanted to go back to your parks concerns. We did basically in the layout of this project, we took into consideration two large open area tracks. One is the area to the north that was, you know, in conjunction with wetlands. Large open space will be open to the, the neighborhood will be open to the surrounding areas as well. And on top of that, we've set it up for the, what we have is a, a river walk or creek walk rather, if you will, along the creek. So we've set the setbacks of all of the properties well off of the creek itself. There'll be no construction within seventy feet, including fences and we're planning on setting that up as an area maintained by the HOA, just like the wetlands. So there is no cost to the city involved with that. And then of course, once we commence the HOA and turn it over, they'll be able to discuss, you know, any additions that they want to do to those areas. If they want to add to their HOA fees, we typically start them out very low. We, you know, being out here, you know, what I consider far county, we try not to set people up where they move into homes and have large HOA fees right out of the gate. We let them choose that if they get together. If it turns out there is a large contingent of children, they want to put in, you know, concrete walkways. They want to put in, you know, stepping stones, any of that kind of stuff. That's something that it can be hashed out and added at a later date. But the idea is in the evenings, as the sun's going down, you can, you know, stroll with your family and walk along the creek. It's a beautiful corridor. You'll have lots of landscaping added to it. So it, it should be, you know, pretty dramatic. So yes, it's not another children's park. We've got Wade Creek right up the street. We also have the parkways, you know, right down the road at Campanella. So adding another parkway. On top of that, we thought we'd do something a little bit different, you know, give it a little more of a natural presentation and utilize the features that are part of the property. So that was our mentality behind that. Hope that helps with that understanding. Let's see, what was the other question there? Was there anything else still outstanding that that you asked? And I'm sorry, I'm getting sold my, without my glasses, I can't read the last names to.
Someone had mentioned on Street one W, extending that to the south. Do you have a problem doing that?
We don't have a problem doing that. We are very big on connectivity for the neighborhoods. As you'll notice, I mean, one thing to really consider in this neighborhood, this is the centerpiece of the, you know, two hundred acres that was annexed in, it was, you know, voted and approved to be annexed to the city for residential development. And so all of the subdivisions have been approved pretty much in a, a large, you know, circular, all of the outside components. This is the center that ties it all together. This also allows the future, the River Mill Crossing to extend through, connect all the way up to Holt's property. So it allows all of the, the traffic to be able to function for the area as intended. And then addressing the upgrades that we're looking at with, you know, the, the future traffic light, the additional lane down on Highway two, twenty-four, we're working to bring that, you know, to fruition. Like I said, we've stepped up and said we would, you know, commit to putting out the funds upfront to make sure that those are able to, to progress smoothly. But the other component we have to that is, you know, this subdivision, if this is approved today, the first house won't be completed in the development for two years. Minimum. And more realistically, right now in this timeframe, probably three years. So that it's very possible that you will get through. You probably already have that street light approved and constructed before we build our first house in this, this approval. So those are other components. And I was gonna speak to the same thing with the sewer plant. If the timeline that was given earlier tonight is correct, that puts us with a sewer plant in, I believe she said twenty-five, late twenty-five, early twenty-six. That means when these first houses are being completed, that new sewer plant would already be in operation. So even though we have plenty of available space with the existing sewer plant, we will be basically putting into the new system when it's complete. So a lot of these concerns that seem like, you know, they're the concerns we get everywhere we go. I mean, it, it's the chicken before the egg. One has to come before the other. If there's no development, there's no reason to push and get the additional services. So the developments have to come into play to be able to get things happening with the TSPs and get things moving. So we're happy to be either the chicken or the egg.
Can you elaborate on the multifamily tax lots?
The multifamily tax lots are the ones adjacent to Eagle Creek, which it is required that those are done as multifamily. And we are planning, in essence, those two parcels look to be somewhere between forty to fifty doors per parcel. Now, if we do the road connection, that may change that. Obviously that'll, it would lose a couple of lots there and we'll cut down the space for that multifamily tract a bit. So that could affect it and give us a little less in the way of doors there.
Forty to fifty total?
Yep, per lot.
Per lot, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Brett?
I, I'm sorry, I have one. How much are you thinking that the houses are going to cost? I know that would just be a ballpark right now.
Well, we actually, with this site, we have a real variety of properties. So from the multifamily, you know, so you can start with, we're gonna have some nice new apartments going in there. And then it'll step up. We have some of the smaller, you know, a minimum lot size is five thousand square feet, but in that we do have some different shapes of lots. So we have narrower, deeper lots. And we have some wider, shallower lots. So they allow us to, to hit different markets. So we will be able, we'll be starting at the entry level. We should be in the, I mean, could be as low as the low four hundreds. And that would be smaller homes, I would say in the twelve hundred to eighteen hundred square foot range. And then we'll be moving up from there. So when you have the wider footprints, you get, you know, a little more garage space. You tend to get a little square, bigger square footages. Our primary bread and butter, what we build, what we specialize in is more in the, you know, nineteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square foot. We do do, can go quite a bit bigger than that. We will have some options there. So if there are some families that need larger space, we, we can accommodate that as well. And especially in the R1 zone. So everything east of the creek is all R1 and that's all minimum seventy-five hundred square foot. And so that would be the very similar product to the Thomas Heights neighborhood that we built in town here last year, which is up here on top of Fourth Street, going up the hill on Darrell Road. I don't know if any of you have been up that way to see that product up there, but beautiful homes came up and those are all in that two thousand, basically twenty-six hundred square foot.
And are the apartments going to be like a managed rental community or are you selling them individually?
They will be a managed rental community. So we're look, we've looked at across the board for, you know, needed property types in, especially in the Estacada area. One of the biggest shortcomings that we have right now is rental housing. I don't know if you guys are, I'm sure you're all keenly aware of that. There is virtually nothing to rent in town. So between us and Cedar Ridge Homes, which is gonna be putting in some apartments just north of us, basically along the entire Eagle Creek corridor, we should have some good rental homes coming, rental units. So we feel that we're, we're able to reach that portion of the market that has been underserved.
All right. Any other questions, Brett? All right. Thanks Brett.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else out there that'd like to speak on behalf of the application?
Terry Brown, I live at two, nine, four, zero, zero, Southeast Eagle Creek Road, Estacada. I have a couple of issues. Is there any consideration for the current property owners that are on wells? If this development pollutes their wells or somehow makes them inoperable? Anything? Or is it just we're out of luck?
So there's a condition, can I answer that?
Yes, please.
There's a condition of approval. And I don't have it memorized, but there's always a condition of approval that says something like runoff from the development shall not impede or impound adjoining or adjacent properties. So basically that means they're required to make sure that the runoff, the drainage from their property is not detrimentally impacting the surrounding properties. They have to submit a downstream analysis and a stormwater management plan that gets approved, reviewed by the city engineer that addresses that. And part of that condition says that if it is found to be impacting adjacent properties, they have to rectify it.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. Taylor, the, the runoff, I'm not concerned is the underground water that I use for my well. If their development impacts my, my drinking water, I understand the street runoff. So it doesn't flood my property, but what about my well? Is that covered under that?
I don't know.
And I agree, you know, there's several things. There's over a thousand homes gonna be going in, in that small area. There's four hundred up there at, at Faraday Hills, wherever it is, two hundred and twenty-four in Brent's. The other subdivisions that have been approved that are not in construction yet, plus there's some land that hasn't been approved yet. That's a, let's say conservatively, a thousand homes, two cars per home, a minimum. And that's two trips a day. You're looking at four, five thousand trips a day on Eagle Creek Road in Hypal. And I just attended a meeting at the library. We talked about the intersection of Deuce Road and Eagle Creek Road and the junction of Hypal Road and two, twenty-four. Never talked about the intersection of Eagle Creek Road and Hypal. Where you gotta make this squirrely little left-hand turn to get on there. I don't know how many, I don't know how we haven't had accidents there before because they come up over the hill down and you gotta make a turn. Nobody's addressed that intersection. And I know that's outside your urban growth boundary, but it's still, all of these houses are gonna, houses are gonna affect that intersection. Maybe if you talk to the county, because the, the fellow that talked about Deuce Road and, and Eagle Creek and a little bit about River Mill Road. When we asked about that, he said that wasn't his, his bailiwick, so. And that's a lot of how, a lot of trips per day that's gonna be going and trying to make that turn. I don't know. If this subdivision is accounted for two percent of the traffic on River Mill Road and intersection. Where's the other ninety-eight percent? I don't, I, I don't understand that. And I don't agree with the, the traffic engineers on their study of how much traffic is gonna create. That, that seems, I mean, ridiculous to me. Anyway. That's kind of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett, if you want to get up and speak again. Would you stack, step to the mic? Cause we got a few people out there on Zoom.
So I'll just speak in response to those, cause I mean, obviously valid concerns. One regarding the well, do you know what depth your well is at? Okay, I'm, I have one at a hundred and ten, which is just behind you. A little east and a little south of you, which is actually is gonna be dedicated to the city as a backup supply system eventually. But the, the maximum depth we do any construction work at in this will be at twenty feet. And that is only along the line under River Mill where the, the trunk sewer line is run. And that's the, the depth that it's at. Everything we run beyond that will be ten foot or less. So to affect something at fifty feet, we're gonna be outside of that zone. So to affect something at fifty feet, we're gonna be outside of that zone. So that's my response to that. And I've been doing this for twenty-five years. We've done a lot of subdivisions. Never once have we had any issues with contaminated wells. But if we did, we would be the first to address it. We'd make sure it was taken care of and write it for you. Even if it meant stubbing a brand-new city line right to you at our cost. So we've, you know, we work really well with the neighbors. The gentleman that's in the five-acre parcel, I don't have the plat map up, but the one little county parcel that's in the very center, I believe that's just immediately to your east. That gentleman had his concerns when we went through and got our Eagle Creek approval. I don't know if you guys remember that. That might have been the city council meeting, but gentleman had some concerns. I mean, obviously, he's in an island in the middle of what's gonna be a sea of houses on four sides. I'd be concerned too, you know, coming from being used to seeing, you know, sprawling open space. So he brought the concerns. We talked him through, and we agreed to purchase his property at a premium, so that he was able to transition into a much larger parcel, a much larger property further out beyond the urban growth boundary. So he's got now another ten or twenty years ahead of the houses coming. So we always do our best to work through with all the neighbors. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to give you my information direct and come over, have some coffee with you, and work out the details. We've talked, we're neighbors now, so. And then speaking to the intersection, the traffic intersection that you brought up, I agree, that little S curve is squirrely as can be. And because of that, just because I'm a local myself, anytime I'm going down Eagle Creek, I always, it took me a while to figure it out, but after three or four trips, I started avoiding that and just going to the next street down or doing the earlier one there at River Mill. Once this goes through, and especially, you know, with the approval of this application, when that River Mill, what's future River Mill goes through, that'll be the main arterial for the entire subdivision. That will carry the bulk of the property, and that will take it right down through what will either be undetermined yet, whether it's a street light or a turnaround, roundabout rather, right down to Highway two twenty-four. So I would suspect you're gonna see probably fifty percent of the traffic pattern going down through there, if not more. So that should alleviate some of the concern to it. Of course, it won't alleviate all of it. There will be people that'll go there, there'll be people that want to use that turn, and it is what it is. Once the urban growth boundary goes further north, it allows and makes that more, you know, buildable, then that'll get addressed as part of the city on a future application, and hopefully that whole intersection is redone. But for us, all we can do is meet all the conditions of the code, all the requirements, as we've, you know, demonstrated here, and work to give a good, solid community development, which, of course, with the city is one of their primary goals and objectives. It's number two on the website, community development. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come and speak?
Terry Brown again. I do have, I agree with Mr. Hartwig and Mr. Sager about that, the parks part of it. I don't know if anything was built into Faraday Hills subdivision. I don't know if anything was built into the other subdivisions that have been approved, and then this one. And Brett talked about some walkways along the river. But to say, well, we have the skate park down there, the park, you know, that's quite a ways for families to go. You have a thousand homes in that area, and what's, what are you gonna do for parks or recreation in there? And we have very limited, and that, the two parks we got are pretty small to begin with. So what are we gonna do? It's always been, when I first moved here, the only park they had was a part of Cascade Utilities, had a little place right along the highway. You know, and then they kind of developed a timber park and some other things, and now we got the other place up by the library, but. So I just don't see us accommodating a lot of the families and outside activities, so my comments.
Thanks, Terry, for that. And I think the big picture, community-wide, I think if we're hearing more and more about parks, and I think we need to make it an emphasis, not for a Thursday night, but more of a bigger community-wide conversation. And I don't know how we start that conversation officially, but Taylor, maybe you could do some behind-the-scenes work on that, and language and things that we could add to these applications in an official manner or legislative or.
Yeah, it would take a code, code update, and ideally, it would, it would be, honestly, probably our Parks Master Plan is more up-to-date than our development code, that it barely addresses parks. So we might not need to overhaul the Parks Master Plan necessarily. We might just need to look at that master plan and say, okay, we agree with these goals still, let's make sure that the code matches what it's intending to do. But yes, that is a separate project.
Okay. And thanks again for the comments. Anybody else want to come up and speak on behalf or against this application? I don't see any hands being raised. Is there any questions we have at this point in time? Comment, go ahead.
I'd like to thank Terry for thinking the same quality of life for everybody. And, you know, followed by common sense. I mean, you follow those two things, things should fall into place. But you gotta keep a vigil with a good eye.
That's all. Okay. Well, let's do this. Let's go X out of the public hearing. We'll go back into the planning commission meeting. And we've all sat here before and know the routine. We need to come up with a motion that Taylor's gonna bring up on the screen here in just a minute. There it is right there. Recommend approval with conditions as presented. Recommend approval, change, add, remove, conditions, or recommend denial. No matter what we do, this goes to the city council?
Yes, this is a recommendation to the city council. And I just wanted to say that that first one, approval with conditions as presented by staff, that would include the three changes that I mentioned on that last slide.
Number one, number seven.
Yes, this is the first of two public hearings. So tonight, the planning commission, they would recommend either approval or denial, and that recommendation goes to the city council. They will hold the second public hearing, which is the final decision, on Monday, November fourteenth.
I move to accept the subdivision two thousand twenty-two oh one as with all of the all of
Conditions?
Conditions and plus probably more. The one thing on that, but well, let's go ahead. I haven't talked about that.
So you just want to approve with conditions as presented? Okay, we got a motion on that. And we got a second on that. Now we can discuss.
Okay, now I discuss. Okay. I'm not going to turn down anything just because of a park. I do like what Buck is doing. And if, if we can get that maintained and somebody takes care of it, that's the way to do it. I do like your idea, did staff move and, you know, talk to our city manager and see why, why that disappeared. It disappeared. You know, so, you know, and if we're, if she needs to talk to me, I'm home every day almost. So I think that's about it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Tara, we haven't forgot about you. You have anything to discuss?
She forgot about this.
She's still there.
No, sorry, I'm still here. I mean, yeah, I just, you know, I have my usual reservations with the traffic and other infrastructure systems in town and, you know, reading the, reading the narrative where it's like, oh, you know, what the relationship, there's a relationship thing that we have, that they have to respond to, and how's it gonna relate in terms of work and recreation and stuff? And it says, you know, it's like, oh, people are gonna work in Estacada, and there's retail downtown. I mean, we barely have retail downtown. We don't have a grocery store. There's nowhere that somebody could work in Estacada and buy a, you know, four to six hundred thousand dollar house. So I don't know, I have my usual concerns. And I wish the traffic study for this thing was better, but I love that there's going to be rental apartments. And, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at.
I have one more question to staff.
Thanks, Tara.
We talked about, Melanie did, about we were at that limit. So by approving this, if we do, that this could just stop anywhere, right?
You're talking about the sewer capacity?
In intersection, yeah.
My understanding, and what Melanie, I think, was describing is that we are approaching the limit. All of the, all of those other developments that have already been approved are assumed to, we're assuming they're gonna get built out, and Kurt feels confident that the existing system can, that will, the, the current development and this pending, and maybe a couple other potential developments could be accommodated by the current system, but it would put us at capacity, right? So.
So then we failed to queue very time, right?
Well, yeah. So, well, I mean, if, if we did get to that point, that would be grounds for a moratorium on development. And that's a whole process that I hope we don't have to go through. But, but if we did get there, then we have mechanisms to then block development until, so, but if we did issue a moratorium, say for sewer capacity reasons, the state, if you declare a moratorium, the state then requires you to do everything in your power to resolve it. So they would be, I'm sure, you know, they would be working with us to get a new sewer treatment facility.
Now, another topic, she also goes to the transportation. Now, is, did I hear or did I not hear that this state and the county can stop us, or at least slow us down if the intersection is dangerous?
You mean intersections outside of our jurisdiction? So the city is the, it's really complicated, because the city is the jurisdiction with authority to approve the land use. But the county is the jurisdiction to, with authority to approve work in the roadway that's under their jurisdiction. And the state is the authority to approve accesses and work onto the highway. So it's the kind of thing where the state gets to say, no, we will not permit this access to be built if, what, you know, whatever. So we could still approve the development, despite the fact that ODOT is saying you should not approve this development until they submit the supplemental impact study, which was we don't, and also, we wouldn't want, it's the type of, it's up to the council ultimately, but it's the type of thing where we would, we would recognize, okay, this, in order for this development to have, you know, transportation facilities that function, they need to do such-and-such work in Eagle Creek Road. Well, if the county is saying, no, we won't permit that many accesses, or no, we won't permit whatever improvements, then we have to look at it and say, oh, you know, this, those improvements that would be needed aren't gonna come to fruition because the county won't permit, right? So it's, it's not really the county saying, saying, no, you have to deny it, but it, we have to work with them on it, right?
Okay, that's what I heard. That's why I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm done. I really have been.
Anything else? Okay, the only thing left to do is vote. So all in favor, please raise your right hand. Tara?
I'm not raising my right hand. I'm a no.
You're a no, okay. So we have four yeses. All those against this, please raise your right hand. Tara, I assume you're against this, and you aren't for it?
That's what she said.
I'm with you, Ben. I'm for you, Ben. I'm not against you, but I'm against this.
Okay.
Four yeses, two noes. That's what I heard, okay.
So this, again, we'll go to the city council with our recommendations on that date to be verified, but we think it's around fourteenth.
It is November fourteenth.
November fourteenth. They'll hear the same public hearing. There'll be time to comment. And if there's any of these little things we can clean up between now and then, you guys always take care of that, so. With that, do we have any public comment outside of? Well, I guess it's open-ended. Do we have any public comment? At all? Okay. Commission comments? Anything? Those are a couple new ones on the bottom of our agenda.
That was very good.
I'm sorry, it's not more entertaining, but, you know, just gotta get the facts out there.
All right.
I'm not a commissioner, but I would like to add, just a reminder, speaking of transportation issues, we're in the middle, we're at the front end of updating the transportation system plan, which obviously, as evidenced by this development and just other issues going on in the city, it is, it's outdated, it's not, yeah, it's not updated to recognize all the growth we've been having, all the growth we can expect to continue. We're having a community open house for that project on Tuesday evening, starting at five thirty PM. There'll be a brief presentation at six PM, kind of project overview, and then a Q and A. But it'll also just be, you know, open, you can mill around, go to the different boards, share your thoughts, questions, concerns. We're really at the phase of the project where we're gathering input on current issues. But we'll take input on, you know, if you have ideas for how to solve problems, we'll take those too. So, yeah, please attend and bring your friends.
We have a, you have a sewage engineer report.
Melanie is, Melanie is hosts, and Kurt are hosting a, I don't know what you would call it, but like a, a meeting for, for, that's, yeah, that's it. On Tuesday morning, it sounds like it's probably at ten AM. I would double-check with Melanie on that to hear from or answer questions for potential engineering firms for that, that might wanna submit proposals for that project. And I, that's probably not the kind of thing that, like, members of the public can attend and get their questions answered to. I mean, they're gonna prioritize, yeah, I think it sounds like it's an open meeting that you could listen in on, but they're gonna prioritize answering the questions from the engineers who might, who might wanna propose on the project.
I have, I have one comment, actually. I went to the city council, the last city council meeting where they talked about the housing amendments, and I'm sure that, that staff has reached out to everybody, but it would, there, there were a lot of concerns and a lot of stuff that seems to be getting entirely gutted from the amendments, and I think it would be great if other people from the planning commission could go and speak to why, you know, why, why we passed it, why we'd like it to pass, why different parts of it were important to us. And that's on Monday, I believe.
Okay. Thank you for that reminder, Tara.
Yeah, I was supposed to come to the one, the fall Monday after, for the marijuana one. And I told it I would be here. It was a football game on, I forgot about it.
It happens on Monday nights.
It does. My wife goes, were you gonna do something? And I go, uh-oh. And I looked at the clock, and it was like eight thirty, so I figured, nah. And I looked at the clock and it was like eight thirty, so I figured, nah.
We were probably still talking.
The next city council meeting is next Monday. Um, the next city council meeting is on, yeah, this upcoming Monday, the twenty-fourth. That's not when the subdivision will go to the council, but. No, but that's the one Tara was. They'll be, yep, they will. So they also continue, needed more discussion on the housing amendments and also, so they continued. Their discussion to Monday and in the packet. For the council hearing, you'll, we updated the amendments to address some of the concerns that they had. And so you'll see the changes are highlighted in the. They're all just changes to the code amendments. Um, those are highlighted in the packet if you wanna see what they look like.
Is that online?
That's online, yep. Cityinvesticated.org slash meetings is where you can always find any.
So they did change stuff? Or there was an elimination of things?
We, there was so much discussion that there, there wasn't. Enough ti- like, we, we had enough time to gather what their concerns were about. We didn't end up having enough time to then work through. You know, negotiating what changes they wanted to include in the adoption, right? And it was, it was rough. Both me and Melanie had COVID and we were virtual trudging through that meeting, but. This coming Monday, they're gonna revisit and probably adopt. Some version of the housing amendments, yeah.
Taylor, I still, I I do have one question and I should have done it last meeting. Did I hear right that you're not taking in any more applications for annexations?
Um, not really. Um, so. The.
Is that a yes or a no?
Neither. We are always, anyone is always welcome to apply for an annexation at this time. Where we've reached that point where we're at about the three year mark where it sounds, where we seem to be on track to have the new. Um, treatment facility built. In about and running in about three years. Um, but three years is the amount of time that our code says. We have to be confident that we can serve the new properties within that three year period.
And it doesn't matter how big the property is or how small.
It certainly. Would matter, yeah. If if it was a smaller property, obviously, it's gonna be easier to serve.
The other question was, how big is that twenty percent that capacity that we have to bounce off of our sewer plant?
That's a Kurt question. I don't know.
That's a Kurt question. I think we've already.
So since we're all talking. I I have quite a few concerns with the wastewater treatment plant and I, I think I've made some of them public. Already. I think the location of it needs. To be thought about. The the current plant has served us since. Richard, you can probably tell me the year. Hundred years? And it's. Since nineteen oh two. And just for conversation's sake, so we get our facts right, hang on.
That's what Estacada.
That was when Estacada began. It it sits on. Come on, map, work with me. Is not working. Here we go, three point one two acres. Of which isn't very. Geometrically. Appropriately shaped. If it was a square or rectangle, it could be very much more usable. So a a plant that's a hundred and twenty years old has served us for a hundred and twenty years and we're trying to move one out. Three and a half miles, three miles, whatever, pick your number, out of the city limits, outside of the urban growth boundary. And I, a few is a, a few of us have been here to make urban growth boundary expansions and I know our growth has grown. Quite a bit and so that, that argument will become easier possibly. But I don't feel that we're gonna. Bust at the seams to that level and and God help me if I'm wrong. Um, that we're gonna need a sewer treatment plant three and a half miles north of our current urban growth boundary.
Acres is involved when they do it?
Ten acres.
Oh, okay.
So. I have some concerns with that. I also have some concerns with the budget and the timeline, just because of. My background in construction, there's a few other people in this room that could probably speak to this as well. Of budgets and timelines in construction as of late. And whether, well, we- weather's its own wild card, but. When. Melanie was explaining the the high water reservoir that's going off the end of Lawrence. As I remember. That was many, many subdivisions ago. It was one of the current uh or Cedar Ridge Homes ones.
Current Creek Estates. Two, I think.
That it it started because we had water issues.
Yeah.
For conversation's sake, was that two years ago, a year and a half ago?
Two, maybe two years.
Well, I guess where I'm going is that's within the city limits with the exception of where the water treatment or where the reservoir is going. With a very willing owner that is close by. I have pretty serious concerns that we're gonna go either cross country or down the highway and then down Folsom. All the easements, state agencies, whether it's ODOT, state parks, because we have a trail there. Um, Clackamas County, DQ. Department of State Land. I mean, we can just go down the laundry list and and trying to get all of these people aligned to do anything is nearly impossible. So I think the three year. Horizon on this. I'd bet a paycheck. That it's not gonna happen in five years.
Look how long it took us to get the first high level water line up here on Moss Hill. Or what new water tower? That was a long time coming.
Well, and that that's just my concern is that we're. If we keep it somewhat within our jurisdiction, whether it's on the industrial park or or closer within, I still think the rock plant is a is a good idea and. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a wastewater treatment guy, but it just logically makes sense because it's closer in. Um, I think we need to explore that option. Maybe Tuesday, when these engineers get together in this room, hopefully that maybe that comes out of it. And I have no dog in the fight. I don't, I'm not on the city water or city sewer. My rates aren't gonna go up, but I just feel like if we're, a- as a planning commission, as an infrastructure committee, whoever it is. Needs to have. Everybody else in the city's best interest involved. And if we can bring it within the city and save half the cost and save sewer rates of that same rate, I I feel like. That's the area we need to go, but. I'll I'll save, I I can go on and on about this for multiple reasons.
Good, I like it.
So.
There was just, there was a lot of discussion about it. I went to a bunch of those meetings because the rock quarry is essentially adjacent to my property. And and I know the people that own it and they have absolutely zero interest in having the thing there. But there there was a lot of, a lot of conversation about that, about keeping it where it is. Um, trying to have it in the industrial park, trying to have it in the rock quarry. And then out, out uh on the Folsom site and and they did actually go through, um, you know, there's the. The easements were not. There weren't a lot of easements needed because there's somebody that owns a huge chunk of that land. Um, and in initial explorations, it wasn't gonna be expensive or difficult. The time, the timeline, I agree with you, that seems. Totally insane, no matter where, no matter where it's gonna go, it seems. So wild to imagine that we would have a new sewer treatment plant up and running in three years, but. Um, there, just so you know, there was a, there was quite a bit of discussion and it's, I think it started like almost a year ago.
Yeah. And thanks for that feedback, Tara, because I I I don't know how I missed that, but I wasn't involved and I, I know that there's a lot of thought that goes into this, just like these meetings on Thursday night, so. I don't want to discount any of that, but I just want to make sure it's well thought out.
Yeah, and there'd be a lot that I wouldn't know too.
Paul, did you pop up there?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, you, I think your your concerns about the time are are valid as well, too. I think it's definitely worth pushing back. As we get into this more, um. But one of, one of the things that that we considered as well, too, was the cost. And the cost in the industrial park versus the cost of the uh moving it out to the Folsom area. Was, it wasn't fifty percent more. It might or, you know, it might have been maybe in the twenty percent more range. So uh. That that was one of the factors. That sure, it's gonna be more expensive, but not tremendous amount more expensive than if we were just to have it within the industrial park. But all otherwise, I I think you've got great concerns, good, good thoughts there as well, too. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul.
I'm part of the Chamber of Commerce and we. As a group collectively thought that the industrial campus would be a better location and I believe that Brent Doddrell. Sent an a letter to the city council regarding that.
Okay. Well, hopefully some good, good stuff comes out of the meeting with the engineers because they're the guys that really know or should should know what's going on, so. It's nine twenty. I don't think we.
I have one last. So sorry, I'm just wanna gauge interest and let you guys know, because a lot of what you're talking about. Is long range planning and that's awesome and that's what you're here to do and it's great. And it's conversations that ideally. You're having also with the city council and so um. We can set up another, a joint workshop. Probably not before the new year. Um, so I don't know. Does that sound like something you guys would like us to look into scheduling? We would ideal, we would wanna priori, you know, maximize. The number of you all who could be here. Um, but I think the purpose of it would be to just talk. Broadly and also about specifics, but broadly about the growth that's going on in the community, things like. Updating our park requirement code, you know, little things that have come up here and there. That um would require code amendments, which are a council approval. Um, but just get everyone kind of on the same page about those things so that staff has a clear direction forward and we can then make it happen. And then it comes through and gets adopted without too much holdup. Um, if that sounds like something y'all are interested in, we can work on getting that scheduled, which would. Prob- realistically, it'd be like February.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Okay.
Is there still Parks and Rec uh commission?
There is, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, no more things from me.
All right, I think we're good to go. Brian Allen, anything to? Finish the night out? Good. All right, thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned at uh. Nine twenty-two.
Thanks, Ben.
Yep.